County Board of Trustees. We'll meet again next week, but this is our first meeting this month of September. So I wanted to welcome you and also ask you if you would like to join me in a moment of silence as we start. Amen. Thank you. And at this time, we're going to have the pledge of allegiance, and we have two students from Fair Oak Elementary School that are going to be leading, and Mr. Thompson, if you will give us the information on the young man to lead.
I can. This is Luke Abels. And Luke is a first grader at Fair Oak Elementary and super duper little student that we got there. And then this is Gracie Wood, and I'm sorry to say, but you are in what grade now? Fifth grade, and she's leaving us this year. They do want to know if we can continue maybe till eighth grade.
Retainer.
But, huh?
Retainer.
Retainer. So, Gracie Wood and Luke Abels.
Great. If you'll stand with me as we pledge the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much, Luke. And Gracie, we appreciate y'all being here tonight. At this time, we'll have an approval of the agenda. I think each of y'all received this last week, and this is the agenda for the work session of September 12th, 2022. Did anyone see any changes that needed to be made? All right, then we will approve the agenda with no objection. And at this time, we are once again going to ask Data Thompson to come up and tell us what's going on at Fair Oak Elementary School.
First of all, thank you, Board, for having us, and we appreciate all the support you give to us at Fair Oak. Without you guys, we know that we couldn't accomplish what the vision and things that we have, and so a lot of times, there's a lot of things that go unnoticed, but you guys are supplying not just financially, but supportive-wise, and we greatly appreciate that. So I do want to introduce a couple of people, and my district leadership would probably say this is the only reason that Fair Oak Elementary is where we are today, but I will agree with them as well. Josh Harrison is one of my assistant principals. Josh has been with us going on four years now and is doing a tremendous job for us there. And then Shannon Jacobs. Shannon joined us in January of this year, mid-year, kind of threw right in the fire, and so, and it's September, and she hasn't left me yet, so we're doing good. So we put together a little slideshow here, and basically, us being so early, we're doing great things right now, we just haven't done anything to desperately highlight, but I do want to highlight some things that we have been able to do and that we're looking forward to doing this year as we move forward with less COVID restrictions.
Welcome to Fair Oak Elementary, where we are empowering and inspiring students to explore, create, and excel while they impact their world. We believe in building relationships, we can impact the whole child to be a better citizen in the world tomorrow.
All right, so you really couldn't hear that, but it's fine. No, she's fine. Basically, just a little lead-in of our mission and our vision. If you, if most of you have got to know me now, I am a relationship builder, and I believe that in order to reach the child, the whole child, you've got to build relationships. And we have seven new employees this year, just from teacher transitions and things of that nature, and quizzing them after the few weeks that we've been in. The ongoing statement is, I can't believe what a family this school is, and I can't believe the relationships that are truly built here. So it is a very important part of us, of us, not working next. There we go. So one of the things that we're most excited about is parents are back. Again, us being a relationship-building school, it's been very difficult for us for the past two and a half years not being able to have families in our school, having the events that we all have where we are building, you know, that relationship between each other, and not only that commitment that we want to make to our community to be a lighthouse in the community, not just a school, but to truly make a difference. So parents are back in the building. For the most part, that's great. Sometimes you would prefer a couple of them not be in the building, but for the most part, it's a great thing for us. And then another thing that we're excited about is our cafeteria. Our students are back in the cafeteria. Our students are enjoying that moment, because to be honest, we have many students that have been with us that have never been in the cafeteria, and I'm going to tell you, the first couple of weeks, I didn't know if we'd ever get back in the cafeteria the way it used to be, because we had students that didn't know how to put their numbers in, they didn't know, they didn't know how to dump trays, they didn't, I mean, so we had to just go back and teach our students, and it was like really going back to first day for all of them, usually as kindergartners, but truly it was kindergarten through fourth grade, and even some fifth graders who hadn't been in a while. So we're super excited about that. Of course, we have our new food distribution company that we're using, and we are still doing breakfast in the classroom somewhat, but we have a very unique way of doing that. We actually have, on our first and second grade hall, we have what we call, what do we call it? I don't know. A hub. Thank you, ma'am. A hub where our first and second grade students don't have to go all the way to the cafeteria, instead they get it on their hallway, go in their classroom, and we, it saves a tremendous amount of time. So we were very thankful for that opportunity. Events are back, and this is what we are most excited about. One of our big event coming up in November will be our literacy night. We already have an author book going to be there and will be shared with us during the day and will be with us that night. We are going to have our arts night in the spring. We're excited about field trips coming back. In recent years, we have taken fourth and fifth grade on overnight field trips for an experience, and of course, that's been out of the window here in the last few years, and so we're excited to have some of those field trips coming back. Our musicals around the holiday season, something that our community pack out, and so bringing those things back. Again, our breakfast events, donuts with dads and muffins with moms and all those grits with grands, and I think we're just going to ask everybody to come the same day and be done. Buffet for everybody. But having those, and then very excited to get All-Pro Dad back. At Fair Oak Elementary, that is a huge, huge, just important group that we have that gets together. We'll have over 100 dads and family members that'll be there each time we do it, and so that's, we're excited about that. Of course, our houses are back. Mr. Hamby, am I over three minutes yet? Our houses are back.
Just a bit.
Okay. Our houses are back, and for those of you not familiar with that, we have community houses throughout our school. We have four different houses where our students actually have a community within our school. They work together, they kind of have different competitions throughout the year. Some of our older students go read with some of our younger students, and so that is something we're excited to have our houses back as well. Of course, student activities are back. We've got good safety patrol, we've got our flag patrol going, our student activities. We're going to start our news team very soon back up. Again, all these things that kind of been cut short with COVID. And then interaction is back. We have interaction in our classrooms, we have interaction on the playgrounds, because more than one class are going to recess grounds at one time, and so we're able to have some interaction, student interaction, which is definitely something that our kids have missed over the past few years. And then last but not least, we have staff morale boosters back. And what that means is, I have an assistant principal that loves to celebrate, and it's not Mr. Harrison. We just show up, and she always has some food event going. We just ask her what we're supposed to bring, and let's go, whatever. And, but we do work hard on our staff morale. I'm very proud of where we are as far as our staff morale, and so we are, you know, everybody can bring potluck now. We kind of got away from that during COVID. And then, that's just a little video, that's our cheer. We say "we are," and the kids do "Warrior Strong, huh." And so that's us, Fair Oak Elementary. So thank you for your time, and are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
As I look at the news and read the comments across the country today and see how parents are being treated in many, many other school districts, it just pleases me so much to see one of the first things you said, that parents are back. That is super.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And we do thank you for being here, and you know, I think you've highlighted so well all the things that we may not have thought of that were gone, but they have been gone. I know the first time I went to an event at Kiwi Elementary School, the first time the parents had been there, you know, the kids really reacted because their parents had not been in the school, so we just don't realize how important it is in all the other things you're doing, and we just thank all of you at Fair Oak Elementary for what you do, for making our school year normal again, and we really appreciate it. Appreciate you being here today, and all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much. Mrs. Spade, do we have anybody with comments? No. All right, do you go now?
I can, yes. So tonight, our first discussion is, you can see Dream Center presentation, and Judd and Daryl, it's been a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago now, I guess, asked Mr. Hamby and myself to go to Easley and see the Dream Center. I've, of course, heard a little bit about the Dream Center, and we have a resale store here in Oconee County that supports the Dream Center, but I've also heard about it on one of my, the news podcasts that I listen to every year, they kind of have a nonprofit of the year type competition, and the Dream Center was featured recently, and this is a national newscast, but when Mr. Hamby and I went over there, we were just blown away. While the Dream Center is a nonprofit itself, it's also just kind of a nonprofit hub, and they want to possibly expand into Oconee County, so Chris Wilson's here, I think she's going to lead, but she's got a lot of supporters here with her tonight, and we told them that if they were going to expand into one of our buildings, it would be the five of you that would make that decision, so Chris.
It's all yours. Or Daryl's, okay, I'm sorry. Daryl's going to speak first.
Golly, that was a bad decision.
She's going to be the closer, so.
Just wait.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Thorson, we just appreciate so much you allowing us to be here tonight. My name is Daryl Broom, and I have been given the honor to kind of introduce Chris from the Dream Center, and I know that many of you are very familiar with the Dream Center. I know some of you have visited the Dream Center to see firsthand what they're doing, and some of you have even participated and worked with the Dream Center in the past, and that's greatly appreciated. But before Chris comes up, I just wanted to offer some quick background. About three years ago, a group of like-minded people from Oconee County, including Chris, started meeting to discuss and address challenges and hardships that are facing many of our citizens and our families in Oconee County. And that group consisted of representatives from the faith community, nonprofits, the business community, county government, local business leaders, and concerned citizens. And out of those meetings, we cast a vision, and we made it our mission, to create a centralized hub in the county that would support sustainable life change. We understand and we agree that no one organization can do everything, but working together, we can do so much more. Not compete, just serve. There are so many people in this county, many of them are here tonight, that have dedicated their lives to serving people in Oconee County. We believe that the location that could serve best as that central hub is the current Sinton Middle School facility. We also believe that the Dream Center is a proven mission of success and would be a great complement to the work already being done in our county. Chris and her team have seen true life change in the people they serve. We believe that it is essential that we continue to leverage the existing partnerships we have in our county and develop new ones. The Dream Center and the school district of Oconee County, both of you nurture and impact our greatest blessings, but our greatest challenges, and that's our children and our families. Chris and her husband Jim, who is also here tonight, and a few of their friends combined their compassion, their prayers, and their resources to start the Dream Center about 10 years ago. If you have visited their current location in the old school in Easley, met anyone that has been touched by their love and involvement, maybe just heard their story, or if you've ever had the opportunity to hear Chris's heart for people that they serve, I think that you understand why we believe that their increased presence and involvement in our county is much needed. Thank you so much, Chris.
Oh, I'm nervous, y'all, so please bear with me. Thank you guys so much. We are so honored and blessed to be here, and we have several members of our staff here with us tonight, as well as our board, and we're just grateful because we know that it's a big deal to get on your agenda, so we just thank you for that. I'm going to give you a quick overview in the interest of time. I have nailed this down to my time limit, so I'm not going to cover everything that we do, but I'm going to touch on the things that I think would matter to you the most, and we have given you a booklet that has additional information in it. You can look at it on your own time later, so that if we're not able to cover everything, you have some resources there. So as Daryl mentioned, we are a 501(c)(3) that we're located in Easley, and we're in the former Simpson Academy Alternative School. We moved into that building October of 2013. We had formed really a grassroots effort, formed the Dream Center in 2012, and were able to get into that building in 2013 and immediately started serving the community. Now, I'll tell you, we've learned a lot of lessons over the last 10 years. Many of them include how not help people. So if there was a mistake to be made, we made it. But some lessons that you learn the hard way, you don't repeat, and I will say that as we were talking with Daryl, we've been talking with Judd and several others, we finally feel like we've been approached by other counties many times throughout the 10 years about replicating these programs, and we've always said, you know what, we're figuring these things out ourselves, we're working on ourselves, and after 10 years, we feel like we have the confidence to do that. So we've helped over 100 organizations nationwide to replicate this, just with our words and our support, but we've, this would be the first time that we did it ourselves. So we feel we have the confidence now, we've made enough mistakes now, I believe, to be able to do that. Every program, with the exception of crisis intervention, is designed to give a hand up instead of a handout, and we think collaboration is key. Believe me, we are so, we don't want to duplicate services, so we like to lock arms with like-minded organizations and just work together. It's way easier that way, and you make a bigger impact with less resources and less duplication. So that's what we've done. We've had six organizations in the building with us since the day we moved in, and we collaborate with them very, very closely. It helps to be a hub. A lot of people don't have a lot of money for gas, and it helps them to, you know, we're helping some of the same people in different ways, so collaboration is a big part of our mission. So we use the terminology "a hand up" instead of "a handout" a lot. Practically speaking, we have just learned that a handout is effective when it's an emergency, and we've also learned that everything's not an emergency. So that's one of the lessons we learned the hard way. But we have been able to implement programs that equip, educate, and empower people and encourage them, and we have seen life transformation, incredible, incredible life transformation. We read a book called Toxic Charity about 12 years ago. It's written by Robert Lupton. If you've never read that book, it really changed, it drove our mission to offer a hand up instead of a handout. A lot of people are just stuck, and they've always received handouts, and they don't know how to really function outside of that. So one of the primary tools that we use is we have over, between 50 and 70 free classes a month at the Dream Center. These classes are on topics such as budgeting, parenting, nutrition, anger management, anything you can think of that would help someone improve their situation, we have free classes. Those classes are taught by volunteers. We actually have classes right now being offered in Oconee County through our partnership with LifePoint Church, parenting classes that are court-mandated by DSS. So a lot of our, a lot of our attendees in our parenting classes, both in Pickens and Oconee County, are mandated by DSS. But when you come to a class at the Dream Center, you receive eight dream dollars. So every one-hour class gets you eight dream dollars, and those dream dollars can be used in our general store, which is also at the Dream Center. You can buy personal hygiene items, toilet paper, shampoo, all those expensive things, and we're basically teaching them, use your cash for your rent and your utilities, use your dream dollars for things like your personal hygiene items. You can wash and dry clothes with eight dream dollars. So don't use your money at the laundromat, use your cash for your rent and utilities, use your dream dollars to wash your clothes. All of this is onsite at the Dream Center. You can take showers. So a lot of times, we have people come in, they're homeless, they're living in their car. It's going to take us, what we have learned, it might take a while for them to get out of their car. If they, if they don't have children and it's not freezing outside, they might continue to live in their car for another month. But if they're working a job, they need to take a shower, they use our showers, and they pay dream dollars. So a lot of people do not know this, but we have four resale stores. We don't receive any government funding. We're completely supported by resale stores and community and grant, local grants. But what a lot of people don't know is we take dream dollars in our resale stores. So if people need school clothes, school shoes, a washer and dryer, furniture, household items, all they have to do is come to classes and earn dream dollars and go buy whatever they want. These are nice resale stores, I will put a plug in there for that. If you've never been, you should, but 100% of the money that comes out of those stores goes to run the Dream Center. If we shut our stores down, the Dream Center wouldn't last 90 days. It is our sustainability, but it's also our primary tool for if somebody needs school clothes, they need school clothes. But without giving them the handout, they can come take some budgeting classes or some parenting classes and buy their own kids their school clothes. So the one program we have at the Dream Center that is not a hand up is called Crisis Intervention, and we basically, we have people come in off the street, they either have an appointment or they don't, they're homeless, they are drug addicts, they, maybe their house burned down. Every situation is different, and we never know what the next story is going to be, but they're all crisis-related. Most of them are related to poverty, but sometimes, in the case of like a house fire, we're able to provide vouchers to our resale stores for them to replace their clothing. We just did this past weekend, we had a family in Pickens County whose house burned down, and we're able to voucher their whole family to get clothing or other items. But we also have people who come in, we're not a rehab facility, but we partner with collaborative partners who are, and we refer them into rehab and say, go through that program, then come back and see us. And we have had people do that, who go to rehab. We aren't rehab. We need them to take care of that first. We help them find jobs, we help them with housing assistance, we work with South Carolina Thrive, where they can apply for multiple jobs at one time. So that's basically crisis intervention. Now, we give them food, change of clothing, but after that time, they can't come in every week for crisis intervention. We do that one time, and then we refer them into our other programs and our classes and our partners, because we want to give them a hand up and not a handout. So what we're both, we're mostly known for, I know I'm talking fast, but I have so much I wish I could tell you, and I only can tell you a little of it, okay? So this is the speed version. What we're most known for nationally and just, and also locally, is the Opportunity Village. Out of pure necessity, this was never our intent to do this, but out of pure necessity, we developed a homeless shelter program six years ago called the Opportunity Village, and our community helped us build it. A cool story that I hadn't been planning on saying is that a local high school, Powderhill High School, is the first group that said, so we didn't have the money, and it was $15,000 to sponsor a house, a tiny house, for us to be able to build this. Powderhill High School said, we're going to do this for Spirit Week, we're going to sponsor a house. Within two weeks, Ren High School got word of that, and they did a house. Within another week, Easley High School got heard about it, and they did a house. Those three schools led the way for our entire community, and we did not have to ask for one sponsorship. All 23 houses got sponsored because of those kids, because people were calling us and saying, I read about this in the paper, and we tell them, we're like, you started, you know, a ripple effect, and it allowed us to build this village. So it's a one-year homeless shelter program, and it's for women and children, so women, and then women with children, so you don't have to have children. You live there for one year, you pay 16 dream dollars a day to be in the program. When they come in, they can't have a cell phone, they can't have social media, they can't have a job, they can't have a home, they, I mean, a car, and they come into us and they follow our guidance. So after, they go, they have a free membership to the YMCA, where they go exercise, they go to see a doctor, a dentist, a mental health counselor. Their children do the same. We work very closely with McKissick Elementary, which is where the kids go, and we partner, and we help them get healthy. So after 16 weeks, it transitions to job readiness. We, they have to get their GED if they don't have their GED. If they do have it, they either need to look into college or some kind of certification to get them out of the $10, $12 an hour range. We've got to get them up to $16, $17, $18 an hour for them to be able to support themselves, you know, when they get out. When they graduate from the village, they have, this is what it looks like, it's so cute, they have a year when they graduate, they have, you know, they have a financial coach, they have a care coach, they have a savings account, they have an emergency fund, they buy a car with dream dollars, they're able to provide, but they graduate after one year, and they're able to move into what we call the bridge, which is transitional housing for a second year. So they do live in a regular two-bedroom house for a second year because they need help as they make that transition out on their own. And this is just an overview, every family has their own tiny house. Inside the tiny house is just a place to sleep and shower. Their living space is inside the Dream Center. We would like, if we're able to come into Oconee County, to make an Opportunity Village part of a long-term plan, we would have to phase it in, but it would, is needed. It is needed, and it works. So in six years, we have served 82 people through this program, and we have learned, and we have learned, and we have learned, and we are seeing great success. Right now, we have about 67% long-term transformation of six years later, they're still healthy, happy, and doing well. And some of the people that aren't accounted for, we don't know like where they are, so I don't know if they're doing well or not. This is a playground that we just built there. So we also have a Christmas assistance program. It was really important that I wanted to bring this up because this is something that really benefits the school. We have done this, this will be our 10th Christmas doing this. We have now expanded it into Oconee County, so we've been assisting Pickens County, Anderson District 1, Oconee, and now Greenville County. We go completely off of Guidance Counselor's referral, so all the Guidance Counselor does is give the application to the parent, and they're in. So we're going off of the Guidance Counselor's recommendation 100%. It takes that work off the Guidance Counselor. So we've been told by them that between November and December, it's like their full-time job, trying to figure out what people are getting for Christmas, and it's frustrating because they've got their other job that they're, they're working on. So if the parent has one child needing Christmas help, they have to take four classes. They have two children, they take six classes, and it goes up from there. Once they're done with their classes, they get a shopping voucher. The coolest thing about this is, it's not only empowering the parents to learn, you know, they're, the blessing, if you've ever bought somebody else's Christmas, and that joy and blessing, it belongs to the parent, they just don't realize it. So it is the coolest thing we have. We have no trouble getting volunteers for this part of it, but what some people don't realize too is we voucher things in the school. So if it's math literacy night or whatever, we will voucher that as a class. We work individually with the school, and if they, especially Title I school, if they have a parent-teacher conference or anything else that they would like the parent to come to, and they have trouble getting the parent there, we will voucher that as a Santa shop class. And once they finish all of their classes, they shop, and everything's brand-new, and it would be our goal, right now, all the parents in Oconee County are being transported to Easley to do their shopping, we would want to have a Santa shop in a Dream Center in Oconee County, because it's a little far for them to have to go to do their shopping. So all of this is brand-new, and it's tablets, it's bicycles, it's amazing, it really is. We also do field trips. So we have a field trip for younger kids, we have a field trip for older kids, and the field trips are really not focused on the Dream Center. The field trips are focused on teaching them that they can be difference-makers, no matter their age, that they can be leaders, that they can choose to learn. So we focus on that, so it's a great two-hour free field trip that doesn't cost anybody anything. They have lunch in our cafeteria and are able to just really learn about helping others and not, and not, life not being just about them. and life not being just about them. We partner very closely with the Pickens County Career and Technology Center. They helped us with our tiny houses when we built them originally. They laid the foundations and did a lot of work there. We're currently partnering with them again with one of our transitional houses, they're remodeling it, so five days a week, they're bringing students in the afternoon and in the morning, and they're doing the plumbing, they're doing the framing. And it's just a blessing for us, because we don't have to pay for that labor, and it's a blessing for them, because they're having hands-on experience that's gonna impact lives for generations to come. So, it's a great partnership. We also, we have several collaborative partners, we have dozens of collaborative partners, but in our facility, we collaborate, our new partnership is with Upstate Fatherhood Coalition. They're interested in coming to Oconee County if we open a Dream Center. We partnered with Urban League of the Upstate. They're also interested in having an office if we open in the Dream Center. And they do a lot of work preparing students for college, job readiness, they do a program with Publix that we host. They're an incredible partner. Ripple of One. Ripple of One serves their Pickens County residents currently in our Dream Center. They are a beautiful partner for us, because when a resident graduates from the Opportunity Village, they are a prime candidate for Ripple of One. They immediately fill out an application for Ripple of One, and they have been incredible to work with. So, we would love to continue that in Oconee County as well. Predestined Outreach is an after-school ministry for middle and high schoolers, where she buses them to the Dream Center three days a week. And really, they have tutors, she sticks with them through graduation. It's really the most life-changing middle and high school ministry I've ever seen. DJJ tries to get kids into her program all the time, so that's been very powerful. JC Cares is a biblical counseling ministry. The Shyne Soup Kitchen is there, and then, of course, we have the Samaritan Dental Clinic inside the Dream Center. And they serve Pickens residents that are uninsured for free. If we're able to open a Dream Center in Oconee County, our immediate impact would be Crisis Intervention, showers, laundry. We would love to partner with the existing organizations that are here, we know and work with many of them already. The best thing about Oconee County is the organizations that are already here. Strong, strong organizations that are already serving this county, and that's who we wanna lock arms with. The free classes and the Dream Dollar Program, supporting our Seneca Store, the general store with the Dream Dollar Program. We already have our resale store program, a Santa Shop, and in partnership, an after-school program, and hopefully, long-term, an Opportunity Village. So, that's our dream, and would love for you just to consider that as we're seeking to come into this county. Y'all have any questions? I know, I wore y'all out, didn't I? I wore myself out.
Now, I just wanna say, knowing you from the beginning, it is, it's just amazing. And of course, working with Charles and Libby, we just, we hope you can come here. You've done wonderful things.
Thank you. It's really God, but we're hanging in there. We're hanging there. He keeps calling us to do more and more, and we keep saying yes.
Obviously, 'cause I haven't been, I haven't been real familiar with it probably in the last two or three years, but you really have added a lot of programs to it, and I think it's just amazing where you started and where you've come, so we just appreciate you being here. And please, ask questions, or, you know, if anybody I'm sure wants to go and...
Please, we would love to show you around. We would love to give you a tour.
Absolutely.
You can talk to some of our residents, they'll fill your ear with whatever you wanna hear.
And just to be clear, for anybody that might be watching online, this is a request for the current Seneca Middle Building Facility on Fourth Street. And, of course, we're gonna use it for another year and three-quarters. So, this would be fall of '24, that we would, you know, move into our new Seneca Middle. And I think that's the idea here. And I joked about Daryl earlier, but Daryl and Judd are collaborators in our county, and we're fortunate to have them to bring, I mean, just looking out there, looking at the organizations that are already in our county that are represented, it's great to have their leadership. And working with Chris and her team, but I certainly, I don't wanna speak for Steve, but I think I can, that we feel like this would be a great addition to our county, and a great way for the school district to serve. I would be careful about recommending to you that we would donate a building that large to a nonprofit, because of the expense associated with running a facility that large. But I think they've proven they can do it in Easely. And I think Oconee County is uniquely positioned, maybe better than a lot of counties, with so many people that want to give back. Because of the number of retirees we have here, we have a base of people that are looking for ways to help others. And this could be really a community hub that would help accomplish that with some guidance from experts that have done it nearby.
I think Judd's got some...
Well, my name's Judd Lusk, I'm the additions pastor at LifePoint Church. And my first sales job, my supervisor told me, "Judd, don't say 'duh-huh' when 'duh's enough." And I feel like I'm getting ready to say 'duh-huh,' but there's some things, there's some things that are worth repeating, and I'm gonna hit just a couple of high points and close. Thank you for that. I don't really have to say much more after what Dr. Thorson and Ms. McCormick said, but thank you to the board, Chair McCormick and Superintendent Thorson, thank you for allowing us to present a vision. We think it's a big, bold vision, but we think things that are big require a big ask, and we know we can't do it alone. So, thank you for considering the proposal seriously. We're very thankful that both Steve and Michael were receptive to the initial thought, and since then, we really feel like we've made progress in being able to explain and cast that vision. And I know that this board, and the administrators, and the teachers that you guys represent and work with every day, you understand the magnitude of the need, okay? Just the scope of need is incredible across not only Oconee County, but Pickens and Anderson and the entire upstate. But, the range of needs are what's important for us to focus on tonight. No one organization can tackle this challenge and do it well alone, okay? And I can't overstate the importance of a team. It takes a team of people, both skilled and passionate about what they do, and it also takes the resources. And that's why we're here today, is we need a resource that we don't have. We've got a lot of people, we've got a lot of skill, we've got a lot of people represented from partner organizations here tonight, but we need a resource that you have, and we're asking you to partner with us to help provide that resource. And, you know, the opportunity to bring the Dream Center and their kind of proven track record of disciplined engagement, I say key, really, being disciplined in how you approach a project like this, how they approach the lives of the people is very important, because once you break rank, and once you make exceptions, it's hard to go back and fix that. And over those years that Chris talked about, they had learned so much. That's the thing that's impressed me the most, is the disciplined approach, because that discipline leads to success. And that's something that I want you guys to see, and as both Chris and Dr. Thorson have said, we would love for the board to come as soon as possible, as soon as you can find the time and visit and get an update, Ms. McCormick, get an update on what's been happening over there. But more importantly, give you an opportunity to dive deeper into the ministry of the Dream Center, and also let you see visually the collaboration. And I'm very thankful that a lot of our partners took time to come tonight just to be here, and their presence is really important. Now, I'm just not gonna mention any names, but we have Ripple of One, we have Christ Central Ministries, we have Safety Trade Ministries, we have Golden Corner Food Pantry, we have Ride to Work, we have St. Paul's Catholic Social Outreach Ministries, and Foothill Care represented here tonight. And I can't say enough about what, you know, what Daryl said about, they came to the table three or four years ago, and I'll tell you, another catalyst was the tornado actually put fuel into this fire, and it was kinda coming, and we have seen so much better cooperation, and have seen so much more, and we think this next step is achievable, but it's within our reach, and I'm just asking you guys to consider it. Again, as I close, and thank you for all that you were doing for the children of Oconee County, and hopefully, we can help you be more successful too. So, thank you.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate all of you that have come tonight, and I will have many conversations.
Sure. And the last thing Judd just said, he said, "Help you too." The biggest challenge we have in education today is the breakdown of the family. It's the biggest challenge we have. Kids that live in poverty, kids that don't have parents at home because of working conditions and different things like that. The Dream Center would help us as a school district in doing what we're supposed to do. So, it would be a worthy partnership, I think. And, of course, there have been other interests in that building as well, so you've got some things to contemplate. But, another thing I'll say on the Dream Center's behalf is, it's very clear, they collaborate with anybody who wants to help people. So, they're not a no-it's-ire sandbox, and nobody else can play in it. It's, we're here to help the community. And that's certainly a feather in their cap at Simpson, the old Simpson Building in Easely. So, thank y'all for coming. They didn't wanna be rude, but they did ask if it'd be okay, and they left. So, why don't we pause for just a second?
Thank you.
Thank you all. As you all leave, I would just like to say that I appreciate your presentation as well. Through my work on my full-time job, I can attest to what you do for families in the community. And so, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I'll move into my quick report here, if that's okay? And I know Ms. Dodd emailed you earlier today, I don't know if you had a chance to look at this school safety and security overview, part of our website, that Ms. Dodd has worked hard on over the last week or two. And, of course, this has come up in response to some of the questions that were brought up by different people, as far as our communication over a threat that occurred at Wahala Middle School at the end of last school year. And we have looked at our procedures, and tried to design a way that we could give a little bit more insight to parents about just what happens if threats occur at school, or if, you know, just different types of safety events occur at our school. So, this is, that's what this website's for, is just a place to point people, to say, here's some basic information that should inform you as to what procedures go on in our school. Part of it is comfort for parents to know that we do have procedures in place, that we are going to look into events that could compromise safety of anybody in our school community. Now, there's always gonna be that dance we have to do to protect confidentiality in certain cases, and, you know, there's room to disagree on when public notifications need to be made, and when they don't need to be made. We can't really discuss that without getting into specific events. I was reading one of the news clipping emails that we get from SCASA, which is just news clippings from around the state of South Carolina. Today's news clippings of the state of South Carolina had four different safety and security events that occurred, or that were reported on in different areas of our state today. So, and each of those events is unique, and it has to be considered, what can we say, what should we say? So, part of my answer, I guess, to some of the questions is, I can't give you just an answer that's gonna satisfy everybody, because every situation is unique. I'm not even gonna stand here and say that, or sit here and say, that everything that was done in that Wahala Middle situation was done perfectly, because there's room for disagreement on that. But I can say, it was taken seriously, and an honest effort was made to keep people safe, and not to hide it. I don't think there was any intent to hide it, it's just, at the time of year, was it right to make a public announcement? I don't know. Again, there's room to disagree on that, and I'll have that conversation with anybody. I have had that conversation with many people. It's just easier to do that, you know, in a small group setting than it is publicly. And I would, I know, you guys know this, but we're willing to talk to anybody. And if parents do call, come up here, we'll sit down and we'll talk, and we'll share things that maybe we can't share from, in a public forum like this. But this is what I think is a very good first step in shining a little more light on what our procedures are, and how we handle different safety and security events in our school district. Our plan after tonight, and, of course, you've got this link, the link is not active yet, but you can get to it through the email that Ms. Dodd sent you. Just look over it, next couple of days, we plan on sharing this link with principals on Wednesday, we have a principals' meeting, get some feedback from them, and then, probably by the beginning of next week, we would anticipate having this live. So, by next Monday night's board meeting, we would think that this information would be public for everyone to look at and read for themselves, and then, come ask questions if there are concerns. But, just some additional information over a topic that's come up in the past couple of months. And I'm happy to answer any questions or receive any feedback, if y'all have had a chance to review anything. Dr. Thorson, I think that all of us on this board have the ultimate faith in you and Steve, and your other administrators, your teachers. I think what you did prior to all of this was to study and review and create policies and procedures that, to your knowledge, I will never forget your statement in the meeting at West Oak, when you said, "Do you really think I would've sent those kids back to school, had there been any danger?" I appreciate that statement. No, I don't think you ever would have. And I think when something does happen, it gives you the opportunity to reflect and say, "Well, maybe we can do more. Let's look, let's examine, let's be open." God bless you, I think that's what you can do, so. Well, Steve? Unfortunately, today, when, just across our country, when things happen like this, there's a certain group of people that largely through social media, just pour gasoline on what might've been a spark. I'm not saying it wasn't a fire, that it wasn't something serious in that particular case, but oftentimes, social media and back-channel communication just creates hysteria out of something that's really not a hysterical situation. And, so that's where we have to wrestle with, do we talk about this and create more of a controversy, or if people aren't talking about it, do we just let it? No one called about that situation at Wahala Middle at the end of May, early June, right when it was happening. Nobody called, and we said, "Oh, no, nothing happened." We didn't hide anything. Do we advertise, I guess, is the question, if nobody's asking questions? Certainly, if there was, if administrators at Wahala Middle or up here had felt like there was, safety was compromised, our job, we've gotta announce, we've gotta talk. But, anyway, so, something we have been wrestling with, we've talked quite a bit about this topic over the last few weeks, and this is just a small attempt to get a little more information out to parents in the community. And we're happy to continue talking and follow your lead on how open you want us to be. So, that's kinda all I had on that. Steve?
Thank you.
Got it?
When things happen, sometimes it takes awhile for answers to evolve, after a lot of thought has been put into it. And I think that you all have done a good job of trying to pull this together and do that.
Thanks.
You too.
And the second topic I have on here, I am just gonna pass off to Ms. Dodd, because she has done the heavy lifting on getting this organized this year, and she was at the pool today.
I was. Today, we started our second year of swim lessons. The board will be familiar with some of these slides, you know, last year, we presented this to the school board's assistant. And I just wanted to give you a quick update. We learned a lot last year. I need to brag on the Y. I need to brag particularly on Gracie Howard and Liz Keenan, who really run this program. They are amazing to work with. We've been able to collaborate and really, I think by the start of next year, I don't even know that we'll feel like we have much work to do. We've really worked together. So these are some pictures from last year. Hopefully, after a few weeks, we will have some more to share with you. As a reminder, kids go in two waves. There are maybe forty-five to fifty kids in the pool at one time. Usually, a volunteer with no more than seven kids at a time. They're separated into groups depending on their swim level. The swim, the permission slip that goes home asks parents to kind of give them some input on what kind of experience they have in the water. So kids wear a really cool colored necklace that matches their instructor so they know what groups they're in. They've done a really good job. The biggest change this year, we're going to look at some others, but last year, students received six lessons over two weeks. This year, we've moved that to four lessons, which you may think, eh, not so good. But actually, it's a good balance for all of us. Just a quick glance at the schedule, the way by going to four lessons, we actually get all of our students in before Christmas break. That's a big advantage for the Y. If any of you are members and you ever go to use the pool, it's full a lot, so this helps them. It also helps our schools. I heard from one principal who, because we were delayed last year because of COVID, they ended up having their week near testing, which was difficult for them. So having this done the first semester keeps us out of that. Typically, I gave you a little schedule about the first wave in the morning, when they get to the Y, how long they're in the pool, and then when they leave. I went today right in the middle, and it was awesome. The new class was on the bleachers in the pool as the first class was headed back to the buses. It went really smoothly. So again, the goals for this year have not changed, just a reminder. This is not a teach-you-how-to-swim strokes. This is really about safety and survival swimming. They teach them to how to get out of the water safely, how to float, some of those skills, just remembering how much water we have. Not so much to make sure they can do the breaststroke, but to make sure they can protect themselves.
Jen, if I could just jump in?
Yeah, absolutely.
She did say four lessons instead of six. However, the silver lining to that is it's actually more minutes in the pool. The time that they're there is longer, so the kids are getting more experience.
So your last slide will just tell you, you know, four instead of six, but it actually.
More time instead of less.
More minutes in the pool because there's less transportation. But really, the big, that was the biggest change. The Y did a great job this year. Last year, they handed out brochures to students to take home to kids. There weren't sure how, or to parents. They weren't sure how many of those actually got home. So they worked and created a whole webpage with a QR code. So the kids take that home. It's accessible to parents if they want to look back and review it later. But the big difference, there's four instead of six. It's a big help for us. There's less time out of the classroom. Our transportation costs are less. It's a big help for the Y. It lets them have more, the pool open to other things. It helps their volunteers. They're done by Christmas. And it actually has let them, you know, use different groups of volunteers. So it was a plus for the Y. I think it was a plus for us. I talked with some of our teachers today that this is the second time through. And of course, it's one school sample size, you know, today. But all three of the teachers, one of them is a first-year teacher, but she student-taught at that school last year. And she said, she actually got in the pool on the last day of lessons with her students last year. But they all realize what a gift it is for our students. So they all appreciate it. They understand while they're out of the classroom, it is very valuable. So I think we are in really good shape. Any questions?
Good job.
I would tell you just to take your tag one day unless you're a member, and you can get in anyway. But just go by. It's Monday through Thursday?
Monday through Thursday, from now till Christmas.
Now till Christmas. Seriously, it'll make your day to go by and watch them one day. It's fun.
I think they'd even let you get in the pool one day if you wanted to.
I saw one of the volunteers over the weekend, and she was very excited about it starting back. That's one of the first things she told me when I saw her. So I think they're really excited for the students to come back in.
Mr. Hagg, they might want you to teach how to do a cannonball in the pool.
I can make the biggest splash to anybody.
I want to go that way.
Well, thank you so much for your work and and all of this. I do encourage everybody to go by. I'm sure it would be only by last year one day. So it's it's a treat to see all the things that are going on.
All right, Mr. Schickling, we will go on with the August financial report, which we have a little more than we did last month.
A little bit, yeah. In terms of inflows, we are predominantly still operating on state aid right now. Little bit of local tax revenue trickling in. And we are, even though it's a small component of budget, we are a little bit ahead of schedule on local non-tax revenue. The interest rate environment's benefiting us a little bit as we see rates ticking back up. In terms of outflows, predominantly what you're seeing is, as school has started now, August payrolls are reflecting more expenditure in the programmatic areas and general support services. So you're seeing payroll and benefit costs materializing there. And on the disbursements, a lot of repurchasing or renewal of annual technology contracts in this one as school got started. You know, the largest expense there is capital as per usual and re-upping liability insurance for the year. So you can see out of three-point-seven, three-point-eight million dollars, one-point-three of that is in capital expense. And then in the general fund, a large portion of that is just insurance, annual insurance premiums. And there's also, some of that capital expense also is coming out of the S R funding still. So you're seeing some S R funding there. Any questions that I can answer for anybody?
Did anybody have any questions on the financial report? All looks good. Thank you so much. All right, and the next thing that we have is to take a look at the 2022 voting delegates. This is for the meeting that is held on December third, I believe. Yeah, December third. This has to be turned in by Monday, November fourteenth. So I don't know whether anybody's given a lot of thought to whether or not they're going to be attending. And I know we do have some elections between now and then.
I've given a lot of thought.
I know you have. So, you know, we can, we can get it in later.
We can, right. Just to talk about it, we get four.
We have four delegates.
Four delegates.
Four votes, yes.
And one person can take proxies, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
So we're going to get four votes one way or the other. If four people were going, it makes sense to have one vote apiece.
Could be one, two, three, four.
Well, I think Sandra and I attended last year and represented. Yeah. It is, it's very interesting, and it's nice to have at least two people there so you can have some conversation because some of the things were not as cut and dry as you might think they would be. So it was interesting. But I guess, you know, if you will kind of look at your calendars and think about whether that might be a meeting that you plan to attend in early December. Because I know that's a busy time of the year, and maybe we can. Let's see, we can look at it though.
Is this the one that's still in Charleston? Is it back in Charleston?
It's Hilton Head.
It is. Is it in Hilton Head?
It's Hilton Head.
That's the annual conference.
The annual one.
In February.
February ones at Hilton Head.
Oh, that's right, February.
And I think this one moves occasionally between Myrtle Beach and or Charleston. I think last year was in Charleston.
Our, I guess, one issue with this is that I believe our schedule is to have a board meeting the night of November fourteenth. So I'm assuming that this needs to be turned in probably by close of business on the fourteenth.
That's my understanding.
So.
We can look at it next week then.
Of course, with the election, just prior to November fourteenth, there could be changes. Three of you are not in elections, so if the three of you decide to go, of course, you could decide those delegates as such, but.
Well, if everybody that will, we'll just kind of look at their calendar. I think we can look at it next week.
Oh, yes. And we could, we could even table it until October and just.
That's true, that's true.
Because we will have a meeting next week, and then we'll have two meetings, I believe, in October. So there's plenty of time to talk about this. Just wanted it to be on your radar.
So let's do that. Let's just bring it back up then in October. And maybe we'll have more information on the meeting because we haven't gotten anything of the meeting yet for this is held. So we'll know a little bit more by then. All right, and our next discussion item, I think everybody has received an email considering some property. I'm sorry, I missed the school calendar.
I know you want to skip it.
As I wrote October by it.
I know you want to. I want you to.
I looked at it this afternoon. It's, it's, let's talk about it. I'm sorry.
I was going to say, here's everybody's favorite topic.
School calendars, the one that, no matter what you choose.
I have a version three.
Yeah, version three. So Dr. Thorson has honestly done most of the 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 work on on this part. He's got the template on there, and and he's handled that. But we, we did look because, again, as we talk about over and over, state statute says you cannot, you're not supposed to start before the third Monday in August unless you have a modified year-round calendar or you get special exemption from the State Board of Education, which is difficult to do for elementary and those. So what we did a few years ago, this time next year, the twenty-first of August is the third Monday. It's the worst possible date you can have, you know, because it gives you less time to finish. So on your calendar options, number three is the, well, I got calendar option, third Monday start, which is the one that would start with students on the twenty-first. But if you look at it, we cannot finish first semester until we get into January. And it's six days, and I mean, we're into the tenth of January, which means Tri-County Tech would have started with our dual enrollments, and our kids would be missing those and taking exams after a two-week break and and just a lot of things that we've talked about that we don't, don't like. Now, we'll say that several years ago, when we had the same situation in the spring, the legislature decided that they would give us a a one-year reprieve and we could start the second Monday. We can't wait till then to do a calendar, though, so we don't know if that's going to be an option. So we gave a couple of other ones. One is the year-round modified calendar, which would start with students on July thirty-first. It's truly a modified calendar with week minimum breaks between each nine weeks. You see in October, there's actually seven days and a workday, so eight days for thirty-first with students. So in the sake of compromise, we looked at one that would start for students on the seventh of August, and that's our year-round modified calendar version two. Teachers would come back the thirty-first, actually have a, I'm looking at the twenty-eighth as being a virtual day typically like we we have been so that people can do their housekeeping details, watch the videos they have to watch, the HR stuff, sign off on the different things, the things for license department and such. And we got all that taken care of. They can do that anytime through that first week. So it's not like they have to be here on the twenty-eighth and cut the the vacation short. But it would start us a week earlier with teachers on the thirty-first and students on the seventh. Now, not that it really affects what we do, but we did find out today that the five Anderson districts sent out a proposed modified calendar for the twenty-three, twenty-four year that I have a copy of in my hand. And their students would start on the third of August, on that Thursday before. Their teachers would have the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth and the three days that week, starting the the week of the thirty-first, and then they would start on the third. So and Pickens, of course, has, or says they have a waiver to start on.
Well, they did the same thing. There's actually says year-round modified.
So that, so they started on the third this year. So I'm assuming they'll start around that same time for the upcoming year. The advantage for us, obviously, with modified school calendar version two, the kids aren't starting as early, teachers aren't starting as early. So that that works out well with with the summer part. We finished first semester before Christmas break. We have an eighty-eight, ninety-two, eighty-eight days first semester, ninety-two second. But that's not really a problem for us because in the spring, we tend to have more days where we're doing activities, especially at the end of the school year. We would finish up on the twenty-third, and we would have the graduation on the twenty-fifth. They would be out again before the Memorial Day holiday, which I think people really like that part of it as well. So those are our calendar options that we have out for right now.
Steve, the the biggest issue seems to be the starting date.
Correct.
So we just need to decide when we want to start.
It, you know, and the only thing on version two is they aren't out quite as much for Christmas. I mean, they don't have those full two weeks that it kind of does everywhere else.
It's, it's, it's one less day for students because they would have the first, and the second would be a teacher workday. And our teachers, the ones that that have been vocal with us and and talked about it, they really like having a day in between the semesters to prepare for the the new schedule, you know, especially with the secondary level. You know, you get in a whole new crop of kids and that kind of thing. So they have, but yes, it does.
That's the only thing, I like that one.
We got, there's a little, you know, there's still six days at spring break. There's still the, you know, the day before and after Easter.
These aren't.
No, no.
If we wanted to do like what Anderson's proposing is starting on the third.
Thursday, two days.
Two days prior to, if we did something like that, we gained two days, and we could put them in December and still have a full two weeks or maybe even a little bit more at Christmas time. So these were just starting places. I feel like if we're going to put a stamp on there that says modified year-round calendar, I feel like we have to have a week break between every nine weeks. Because I, I think if you don't do that, are you really just kind of putting a label on something to?
And they would have, like, that's the, that's the good thing about it is that week in October, which we normally don't have a week off, so they've got a a week off there, and then we go nine weeks. And then, yeah, if not two, four weeks at Christmas, but it's still.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, if if there was the possibility of, I know the the semester will end, or the nine weeks will end on the sixth. If there was something that you could do with a day or so in October, but it doesn't really make sense to do that. Because we don't, we aren't normally out for a whole week in the fall. But again, if we're going to do a modified calendar, if we need that week out, then we need that week out, but.
I think after doing this a year or two, families would start loving that week in October so much that they would never want to give it up.
You're right.
That's what we heard from other districts like Greenwood when they did this. That was their family time to go to Disney at a cheaper rate or whatever it was.
Would you, would you like for us to play around a little bit more and maybe create a couple of options off of this option that might maybe more closely mirror Anderson and give a little more time at Christmas? And just is our idea to start sometime early August, but put those breaks in so that we can legitimately claim this is a year-round modified calendar, but not going as far as starting in July? Does that, maybe have a couple of more versions of that for you to look at?
Yeah, I I just think starting in July is tough. I think that's a tough sell.
And then what is, I I don't have a calendar in front of me, and I don't know when Easter is in 2024. March twenty-ninth, that, is that a Good Friday?
It is Good Friday.
That is Good Friday. So then the eighth, what is? That is Good Friday. So then the 8th, what is that?
The 8th was just because we had the one day, that's really what leaves us into spring break, even though it's gonna be a little earlier. And so we didn't want to start really the semester or the, the fourth nine weeks on that Friday. So it's a good opportunity to mix in a, an extension of the spring break.
That's what drove my thought process behind this is start the breaks right at the end of the quarter. So finish a quarter, start the break.
And that's what it should be.
And, um, but that's not, I mean, we could start the fourth quarter on the 8th.
Well, we could move the, we could move the workday to the 8th and then start the quarter still on the 18th.
But I just don't see any way the third Monday start would work. I mean, I just, there are no breaks.
No.
You've got, it's just, there's just no breaks in there. I think between parents and children and, and teachers and administrators, I think you would just be insane. But you, because you go, basically, you have that one day in September. That there's just really nothing.
The, the whole thing is, the one instructional argument that could be made that I think carries a lot of weight is that it is not good for high school students to have six days of the second semester or after Christmas be still first semester. That, that's, that does not make sense in today's world. As much as we collaborate with the local colleges and universities, just bringing closure to the first semester before Christmas, I believe is instructionally sound. And you just can't do that if you start on the 21st of August. You cannot do it.
Two things that I think would be wrong, and you said one, that it, well, both of them really. Uh, starting the third week in August, I think you can't do that because you might as well rule that out. And starting in July, I think you might as well rule that out.
We can look at some, uh, some options around that seventh time and, and different things. You know, we, we did talk about it a little bit. I mean, it, it's not necessarily a bad thing to be on the same schedule as the people around you because, I mean, you know, families can go do things together and that kind of stuff and people going across districts to work and, and, and things. I mean, it, it doesn't, uh, doesn't hurt anything to look at those as potential options too.
Something to be said for that, yes.
Well, we'll have a couple of options around this light blue.
Yeah, if we could get, just for us, I think we, our goal would be to get something done wrapped up by the October meetings so we can publicize and people can make plans would be the biggest thing.
We'll get feedback from the principals on this on Wednesday too, as well, so.
All right, anybody else have a seat on that? Now.
Now.
To where I wanted to go last time. Potential property switch.
And, uh, this, uh, in speaking with Jamie Gilbert, who's the new director of the O'Conne Economic Alliance, um, he called a couple of weeks ago with this request. And while I'm not at liberty to give much information about the, the company and why they need it and all that, the bottom line is, there's a company that has expressed interest in locating in this business park. But for that to happen, if, if this company, it's large enough to where their footprint would include that six acres behind the Tri-County Tech building and that's integral to making this a desirable spot for that company. So, it has not been surveyed. This came up pretty quickly. We've not surveyed it. We're not ready to say plot such and such would be donated. But in talking to Jamie, I do think it would be best, if y'all are so inclined, to make a motion, have somebody make a motion that we would work with the county to, if this company did decide to locate in O'Conne County, that we would work with the county to trade parcels. The red parcel is currently owned by the school district of O'Conne County. The blue parcel is owned by the county. We would be switching if that company came in. So if, if there could be something written in the record that would give Mr. Gilbert the ammunition to tell this company, hey, look, they've already said they'd do it if you located in this county, I think that's kind of what, what's being sought. Just a little background, which I, I shared with you in email form, but to say it for everyone else. That property that we own, which is really everything inside the driveway, in between the driveway and Highway 11 is what we own. We own the property that the Career Center's on. We also own the property that the Tri-County Tech building is on. It's just in a long-term lease with Tri-County Tech. But all that property was given to us by the county for the purpose of putting a career center there. So it's not like school district spent a lot of money on that property and now we're just giving that property away. This was a collaborative project from the very beginning. So I think it's in the best interest of the school district to continue that collaborative nature of this piece of property. And, uh, if, if the county needs it to land a big business, hey, I think it'd probably be a pretty good thing for our county.
Wait, what, let me ask a dumb question. Why could that company not use the blue square there?
They're gonna, their main building part will be across the street from the red. That section that's across.
So on this picture as it's shown right now, and it is shown, uh, with the right orientation, north to south. So the red area is six acres. But if this property came in, my understanding is immediately south of that red parcel is where the rest of the building project would be located. And they wouldn't want to be on two different sides of the park. They'd want to be contiguous or, you know, right across the driveway there.
And again, the conversation has been had with Tri-County Tech.
It has, and, uh, matter of fact, the first phone call I made after Jamie called me was I called Galen DeHay, the president of Tri-County, and he spoke to his commissioners. And, uh, they are supportive of this because they recognize too, I mean, we need businesses to train our students and Tri-County Tech students to take the jobs that the businesses are gonna provide. So this is, um, I feel like something we should, should do.
And again, this is not necessarily something that's definitely gonna happen because I think we just need to, um, let them know that we will do it if that industry decides to come in because, I mean, that may determine to somewhere else, but it certainly would be a, a boost to our county to have them.
If you're so inclined, just a simple motion to direct the administration to work with county officials to swap parcels in that site. I think that would suffice now because, like I said, we don't have it surveyed. We haven't, we don't have the specificity we need. And we would do that at a later time, but just something that Mr. Gilbert could show that company to say, hey, this is gonna happen if you decide to locate here.
Anybody else have any thoughts or any questions on it?
I have a question in my mind and, and maybe it's just, I'm like Buddy, it's just, just a dumb question. But long-term, I mean, the company that is going to occupy that location now, that, that's a real plus for the county. Is, is that a real plus for the Career Center? And if that company were to decide to sell later, are there any assurances that that wouldn't become a negative impact? And, and I know that's probably more than what we can ever hope for, but.
We have, I mean, I, I think it would impact Tri-County Tech more than it's gonna impact us. Because if they were to have a need to expand, I would think the place they would go is that parking lot and then they would need another parking lot. But, um, right now, they, they're in, in really good shape with what they have. We, we have some room where we could do some things if we need to on the backside of the Career Center for us. You know, for whoever's making those decisions in 15 years or whatever, they, they would not, their hands would not be completely tied. It, it wouldn't, um, because we, we would not use that piece most likely anyway. We would have had Tri-County Tech expand their parking lot and, and that kind of thing. But that's not somewhere we typically, when we were looking at the plans and the architects were laying out where you might add on, that's not something that we would use.
And it may be a little bit more expensive construction, but the place that I think Tri-County Tech could still expand on this site is on the front of the building. It'd probably have to be two stories on the front where the second story was attached to the, the current building.
Would.
But it could be done. There's plenty, if you drive by that site, the front yard is huge. It's, so you could, you could still expand even the Tri-County Tech building there if you go forward, not backward.
So say we do the swap and we get the, this parcel in blue, what do we do with it then?
Well, um, I think that's in good faith on the OEA's part, the county's part, just to say, we're not trying to take property from you that we've already given to you. But truth be known, wouldn't we ever do anything with that? So if another business came in and said, hey, we'd love to have that six acres on the north side, probably in our best interest to get that up too. We've got a beautiful building that we're not gonna outgrow in the near future anyway. And like Mr. Hamby said, even if we do want to expand out there, we can come, you know, to the back of our building a little bit and we've still got some property where we could put additional classrooms, additional labs, so.
We, we might be able to do things like we have in the back if we would go like, like where we let them drive the skid steer and do different things and have activities like that. It could be, I haven't looked at it close enough to, to go out there to see because this is the first time I've actually seen the, the land that they were interested in trading. But, uh, if, if we needed something, I think that, that would probably be the things we, we would do. But I, I, I think we're in really good shape with what we have already, what's right there in, in our backyard. And, um, you know, um, I, I don't think that's gonna be a major, major issue for us.
You know, I think that, that, that we want to do the right thing dealing with the county and dealing with Tri-County and, and making sure that we try to get as much industry as we possibly can, especially if it's a, a good, solid industry that's gonna stay and gonna provide jobs for people. At the same time, I think the board's concern is we don't want to, to do something that was, is going to crap us and limit us down the road if we needed to, to, to some will be allowed. I think that's our major concern.
If that red box extended beyond Tri-County Tech's driveway and got behind our building, I might be more hesitant. But like Mr. Hamby said, the main impact here would be growth for Tri-County Tech. And that decision, Mr. DeHay spoke, or Dr. DeHay spoke to his board of commissioners and they've endorsed this. So, um, they're on board as to say they would support this.
So is there a potential of negotiating the blue parcel somewhere back around to where it's behind the Career Center so that it's more accessible for us?
The, uh.
Or is that?
I think that's taken by.
There's already a, a new company going out there, Impact Housing, that they had the grand opening for or the ribbon.
Groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking, that's what I'm trying to say.
Groundbreaking.
They had the groundbreaking a couple of weeks ago. That's actually gonna be immediately, uh, to the left of that red area. So, um, yeah, that part's filling up, um, that. And it is, I mean, for our Career Center to be there, it, it's really a very unique and good situation for our students. Mr. Lee Croix has, he has already forged some partnerships with the businesses that are there and, and it's gonna help our students, so it's, it's a good thing. And I don't know too many details of this potential new company, but I understand it's quite the, it would be quite the, um, business to land in this park. It would be a, a very, very large economic impact if it materializes.
And a land lease is not, not even an option?
I mean, if it, I, I doubt it. I would imagine that would be a.
It probably wouldn't take.
A roadblock for a company. But I mean, the, when the county makes fee and lieu deals, those are 25-plus years anyways, uh, we're.
So I guess you guys have, have given enough thought to growth potential of students, the number of students. It's been pretty steady and stayed the same for a number of years, pretty close to the same. So, so you don't anticipate any major growth in the Hamilton Career Center?
I hope it grows, but I think there's room for growth because when they have 1,300 students, that's not like our high schools that would have 1,300 students all at one time. Their 1,300 students come at four distinct times, morning and afternoon, two different semesters. So they've got room to grow, even just in the building they're in now as far as student population. I think even facility-wise, that still leaves us a little bit of room to grow if we need to even grow the, the building itself. And because the county was so good to collaborate with us and there was a lot of synergy when this project was being talked about in its infancy several years ago, I just think it's in our best interest to, to continue that collaboration and say, right now, the best thing for our county would be to put its best foot forward and try to recruit that business. Even though there's, that, that's my assessment of it and my opinion. But, ma'am, do you want a motion tonight or do you want to just discuss tonight and then do it next week?
Well, I mentioned just to let the administration discuss with the county, with the OEA, um, a, a potential swap of property.
I so move.
Thank you.
Well, I'll say a second.
Does that motion indicate a willingness to make that swap? I guess that's, that's what Mr. Gilbert needs to take to that company to say, hey, the board's willing.
I think that's where we're going.
I think that's the whole purpose of it.
Question, do we think it would be advisable for us to just eye it, to look at the property as a group together?
In y'all's opinion, is it like for like without seeing it?
I mean, I, I, again, I, I'm not as concerned about the, the blue. I'm not concerned about what we're getting in the trade-off. I think the, the fact is that the county gave us those, uh, that acreage, you know, and saved us six, $700,000 when we, we started it. We don't need it as a school district to be able to produce what we need to produce from a technical and a career technology center based on, uh, what the architects presented and what we talked about when we were building. I, I, I wouldn't, I don't really, the blue trade-off doesn't really affect me one way or the other. I don't really care if we get it or not.
A building.
Yeah, we're not gonna do anything up there.
But, but what I do see, we talked about growth of the Career Center and even growth from the Tri-County Tech facility. By having businesses here, it gives us potential to grow because a lot of our students should be in those buildings doing internships and getting experiences. So the companies that locate in this park provide opportunities for growth for us as well. So I, again, I think it's the best thing to do.
My question was, would we be able to sell it, but I guess it's not really, that's not.
No, there's, there's a, I mean, we, we can't sell the, the land we have. There's a clause. I mean, we, we can't sell what they gave us for that. Really, we just are giving it back to them to use if, I mean, there's no guarantee that it's gonna go through, but it just gives them the option to, to dangle that carrot to, to try to draw a business in.
Call for question.
All right. All in favor? You've heard the motion to give the administration, um, the authority to discuss the land swap in the, um, O'Conne Industrial Technology Park. So all in favor? If that's a done deal.
Thank you. I think that will be good for our county.
I think it will be too. And that was Dean and. I, that is the end of our regular meeting tonight. We will go into executive session for, um, personnel items and further recommendations and changes. If I could have a motion to that effect.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second, all in favor?